Hello, good afternoon, good evening, good morning, whatever time it is for you. Welcome back to the podcast show once again. We have another yet special guest today on the podcast show. Gwen Rogers, how are you doing today?
I'm doing well, how are you doing?
Doing pretty good, just staying warm and staying dry, so.
Absolutely.
It's most appreciated, so Gwen, just hop right into it, cause you know what the podcast is about, we are very happy to have you here, cause I know we talked about it before, but we're here. So that's great, so guys, be very in tune to this episode, cause this is very important. Um, so Gwen, but first, before we get on to the deep stuff, may you give yourself an introduction to the viewers out there, to let them know who you are and what you do?
Absolutely, so hello everyone, I'm Dr. Gwen Daddy Rogers. I am the president and CEO of Arrowhead United Way. I am also on the Board of Education for the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools, serving the entire San Bernardino County, as well as Rialto, as well as Snowline area, so. And on top of all of that, I'm a mom and a wife.
Yes, that's a job too, huh?
Yes.
Big time. Oh, that's good, well, for your first question for the show today, do you have any history with video games? I, I think you do, I'm pretty sure you do. But keep letting me know, a- and also the views right now too, what you've been exposed to and what you're just liking, like a, like just, oh, this is amazing.
So it's funny that you ask, obviously I go back to that era where I think it all began, so I don't know if you all give us credit for that, but I'm of the Pac-Man era, I'm of the Frogger, I'm of the Tetris, I'm of the Centipede. Love those all, and even the, the pinball machines, you know, so they tie in somewhere, I think.
They always tie in, so pinball machines, even Monopoly board games.
Okay.
It's still a game, so hence, you're, you're a gamer, c- 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 congratulations guys.
Wow, I'm a gamer, I didn't know, cause I love Monopoly, I love board games, so.
Right, right, that's really fun, and just to have a family time with that too, you know?
Yes, that's exactly what we did.
Yeah, so that's awesome, so what that also said too, kinda jumping around here, but what do you see gaming going on today? And how, how can that benefit society? Cause there's so many different, different avenues about gaming, you know, besides board games, but there's VR, there's PlayStation, Xbox, et cetera, et cetera, but to be more involved in the market though, and how to actually help people, cause there are types of gamings that we, that we covered before in the past episodes, but what's your thoughts on the whole issue about?
You know, I have to definitely give you credit for this, right? Because there are, I have my perspective, and you know, sometimes we think we know, and we don't know. So when, every time I heard the word game, obviously I went to, how is this going to tie into education? Cause I'm always looking at, this is something that's extracurricular, and how do we then separate the two? But actually, what you taught me is that they don't need to be separated, right?
They don't.
So I see gaming definitely the future and the now, you know, a lot of times we say the wave of the future, but no, it's now, now is the time that we should be tying in all of the things that I'm seeing our youth attracted to doing, not just, um, playing the game for games, and of course they enjoy it, but I've now seen my twenty-four year old, my twenty-six year old use it as a way to, you know, it's an outlet, right? And so they're playing it, they're still engaged in it, but it's, 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 it's that connected to everything else is going on around me, but I wanna do this, cause I enjoy it. So I see it as something that not only having it recreational if you're older, but our, our students in school now can create their own games, right? So talking about the future, that becomes jobs, that becomes new, new board games that are now, you know, technology driven.
Yes. VR board games, you never know, right?
Yes.
Where you're actually there for like an avatar yourself and moving.
Right, oh.
You know, so that goes with the fitness part.
That would be incredible.
That goes with the whole fitness thing.
I can become actually the, the, the car in Monopoly.
Drive a little bit, kinda like Tron, but real life. Yeah, so guys, so like I said before, but also how you just heard from her as well, video games are not just you sitting on the couch and playing games all day, doing nothing, there's actual studies about how gaming can help your brain functions, about memory, sensory skills, uh, how to improve your thought process, learn math, learn economics, et cetera, et cetera. So all the stereotypes that has been said for decades, they are fading away more and more because we're getting more exposed, different types, different outlets and different people who do game, so, um, with that said as well too, how can we, but also the viewers as well, help with you have going on for what you're doing?
So definitely, the, the big thing for me is that tying it into education. It is doing exactly what you did for me, I, and I was open, you know? I was like, well, you know, and, and believe it or not, I went on and listened to, you know, your podcast and saw one in particular, um, where the student just gave the whole journey and, and began to explain about how it affected him, and I was like, wow, and I was actually in the car with my son, right? So he was tying in, and he was getting into it, and he was like, yeah, he's right. And it just changed my whole perspective, and so I'm always thinking education, so I'm thinking wherein can this lie? We're doing pathways now, right? Pathways is pretty much creative electives, which was the old school way of being referred.
It was.
And so now, if we're creating these, uh, common, modern, today type of, uh, projects that then become curriculum for someone to be able to say, even though I'm taking the core classes, because I'm thinking about, you know, going to college, we know there's college and then there's career, but then they're getting to explore their skills and their talents and their abilities long before they have to do it after, you know, education. They just may create something that we never heard of, and I'm looking for that. That innovativeness is what we need to pull out of our students, especially right now, because after COVID, everyone is looking at it, oh, this happened, that, and it's true, but the creative side is what we have to tie into, and that's what gaming is doing. It is giving them, obviously, it's kept them connected, and then giving them the creative mindset to use that other side of the brain to say, what more can I do? And so I, I really wanna hear this at board presentations, I wanna hear it spoken to the educational side, to our leaders. I will, I'm lifting the voice as well, as I told you, come to some events, and those events were tied into our Department of Behavioral Health, well, go figure. That's the side where we begin to connect the social, emotional, and, you know, talk about outlets when you're stressed, stressed, trauma, those types of things.
Yeah, cause it's better than just going outside, you know, at your house and doing nothing.
Nothing, right?
But to actually have something that makes you more happy, but to put you back on track with your life. It's important, cause like I said before, whenever we host video game tournaments, we always make them what? Educational, so having different businesses and resources come to my events.
May I ask you this question, a question that I don't know, so is adults also part of the gaming events? In the room when you do, okay.
Yes, um, for the tournaments, they're all, all ages, for sure. So let's say, for example, if it's a school, we have a little video game tournament for maybe a classroom or for a event. Then of course it's for those high schooler kids, but if it's not involved in a school, um, a school, um, school areas, so to say, then it'll open to the whole public.
Perfect.
Right.
Cause you know, we like, you know, again, we, we, we like to go back to that time in life, when we could do those things, that's why we're, we're, we get nostalgic, right? And so we see a Pac-Man, and we're like, oh my god, you know, and there you go, you know, we've seen Twister, you know, for example, on some game, so. We, we have to put the word out on that, because we, we didn't call ourselves gamers, we just played games. And I think that's what, that's what that stigma was around, it's like, but games, but games, but I get it, I get it, I totally get it.
Yeah, a- and then like with that said too, just to have maybe some other businesses or whoever else comes to support the events, or just to give some information for the people that attend, cause it's very important for people to know who does what, who's in charge of what, so they can get the right help.
Exactly.
Rather than just being confused at home, like, oh, like, I don't know where to go, so I'm just give up, like, no. Please do research and please come out to events for your cities or for your schools as well, to get more information about what you probably need. But also, don't be afraid to hear a no, because the people who don't know, they will direct you to somebody who do know.
Yeah.
Networking.
Absolutely.
Just gotta get out there and go get it.
And that's what you did, um, for me, and I'm, I'm happy to even announce, they just told me recently, there, there's another, uh, term that I wasn't quite familiar with was esports.
Yes.
And so when I shared with them, of course, when I presented and said, we need to get gaming, and just recently, they were talking about some for funding sources and opportunities that was happening at one of our, uh, middle schools that they're trying to bring in, in my mind, which was gaming, and they said, well, um, we know that when we're tying it to funding, sometimes you have to tweak words, and I guess there is this new word called esports, and so esports, my understanding is under gaming, so I'm on it, I, I'm on it, I'm championing for sure.
Yeah, it's always fun just to, you know, but to have, we'll go back real quick, you know, like, I was a mentor for college for four and a half years, I was always helping students, like transfers or freshmen. Sometimes staff, to be honest with you too, cause they need to help enhance the time too.
Yeah.
But like, I always tell people, in general though, do something for fun that you love to do, but do it for a long term, so it's not called work. It's called a self-job.
Yeah.
You're happy to wake up in the morning to do it, you're just helping out people while you're being helped and having fun, it's all positive circle.
No, that, and that is exactly, um, I couldn't have said it any better. If you lose that, um, from you, everything becomes just work, and work is not slash fun, right? It's, it is work, it can be fun, of course, but if you put it in that, you know, uh,
Category.
Category, then here we are saying, oh, I gotta go, I gotta go do this.
Oh, Mondays.
Yeah.
Mondays are fun, you know, it's about what you make it.
You're right, you're right.
That's all it is, yeah.
And it adds to that, what we've said, once you find your passion in what you do, um, you'll, you'll never work another day in your life. I didn't understand that term, but now I get it, it takes the work away, because you're doing what you do, and that's what I try to do every day, um, you know, as I'm here representing Arrowhead United Way today, that again is that passion, um, working with people.
Yes.
You know, being around, how can I serve, how can I support, how can I take stigmas off of things, um, for others to be able to excel, especially our young people, it's just, it's huge to me for them to know early on, you can not only be what you wanna be, but you can design how you wanna do it.
Yes, very important guys, so just be expressive with yourself, and be true to yourself too, don't just try to be like everyone else, cause I know that's probably the thing these days, but just be your true self, and then the right people will come to you, but then if not, just still be patient, and then stuff will come to you eventually, in any way, not just for your career, but business, maybe relationships, who knows? But always stay positive with your life, and if something comes to you.
Absolutely, and you're amazing too.
Oh, appreciate that.
You have not lost your edge to connect, um, with people, and, 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 and that is why I, I'm sitting here and always ready when you call, what are we doing, what do we need to do?
Yeah.
Because you're making that difference, you know, you do the gaming side of things, but there's so many other facets of you, but we know that what rises to the top as your passion, and, um, you know, I applaud you for the service that you're doing. You know, I'm very proud of the work that you do, and if you're, you do it in such a way, I'm thinking, wow, you know, this is cool. Even for me, um, it's a whole nother side, a whole nother side of this wonderful person here. But this is a passion that he has, and it's gonna embed into the future, and, and we need it, we need it for our youth. We need to present to them new ideas and new ways to reach them where they are, and if they're gaming,
Yeah.
that doesn't count them out, that says, come on, let's, um, you know, uplift this side.
Right, because the gaming thing can be like, um, more like a catch or like a reel
Yes.
to bring the youth more to what's more, uh, needed for them to, you know, like to, to succeed and excel.
Yeah.
Cause why not just have video games, right? Of course, that's great, but also have stuff where they can learn from. Like for this weekend, like, you know, there's two members I have from my, um, Board of Directors team, so shout out to you guys for coming to the event. They're going to have their little presentation, or their talks to the people who do attend my event, about how to enroll in colleges better.
Awesome, tie it in.
Educational, tie it in, you know, like a pair of lace shoes.
Yeah.
And they'll tie it in that way, but it's all around, like, stuff that I do is not just for me, it's for my immediate family, and my own future family one day, so they can have a better foundation of starting.
Yeah, I, I think you're, you, you've been on to something, you're on to something, and obviously, it's, it's happening around, and, um, we do need this, um, to keep our, um, youth involved, as you said. We know that work is not designed to be fun, nor is school, right?
Yeah.
But there are things that can be done to, to connect you, to make you feel better about it, instead of looking at it as, ah, Monday morning, I gotta go to school, you know, the same thing, we're saying it going to work if you're not doing something that you're passionate about.
Right.
And so don't think that they're not saying the same thing, and if you look, if they looked at it long term, they think, I'm gonna do this for thirteen years, and then it's only to do it again, it just started again, so we gotta give them, um, a different perspective that although you may decide to go career path, but you're still within the higher ed, has something for you to connect, and then you get your certifications in gaming, certifications in, you know, in building things and creating, you know, whatever falls into esports. So that's why I'm championing it, it's, it's right in education line, for sure.
Right, see, but that also makes you guys more competitive for when you do apply to jobs, because say for example, you're gaming, but we do another career field right at the same time. The, these employers, they still dig out your skill sets, sometimes regardless of your titles or your background.
That's what it is.
Okay, so this person's a gamer, okay, he did, okay, cool, so like, he's a coder, oh.
Right.
He can be in cybersecurity for our company.
Right.
One example of many that can be beneficial, and I've told people this before, uh, last week I gave a speech, two, two speeches actually, uh, for a classroom at, uh, UCR.
Oh, excellent.
Um, for a sorority, I'm, I'm, I don't remember their name right now, but they had a big old event
Okay.
in, in, uh, UCR, um, but anyway, like, just to tell the, the parents, so once again, all ages, the parents and the kids about all the benefits of gaming, the career paths, so you can design video games, tell stories. You can make levels, make sounds, all kinds of stuff, something you can do, all kind of different things. But also guys, go to these companies, Blizzard, Santa Monica Studios, Sega, who knows? Look at what they're offering, and try to use that to pinpoint your way for your, your career goals. If you wanna do a career in that, or have a business with the community to where you know you can be involved in, so.
Be always ready to make your pitch, you know, we, back in the day, it was elevator speech, whatever, you know, those creative things that they said, but now, you know, it is, you never know who's listening, you never know who your audience is, and just be prepared, because that's where ideas come from. You know, they really truly come from what you're thinking, ne- not necessarily is anyone else thinking, or know, or even understand the next level of it, so this is really exciting, because we've always been talking about what is, you know, the twenty-first century learning and moving on and moving forward, in order, um, to, you know, just build and enhance education, this is, this has to be there, it has to be there.
Yeah, cause it gives another avenue to learn.
Yes.
You know, cause you might remember, you have kids, remember Leapfrog?
Yes, I do, yes, I do.
We had Leapfrog growing up.
I remember that.
And guess how we learned that from? Uh, video game system, learning math, it was fun.
Right, right.
You know, so bringing that back, but also to get more involved in schools, cause it, because now that's what, you know, well, not now, but I've been trying to do this also, not just give speeches to kids, but to actually have a program, or to get more heavily involved with school by having events with them. Because one day, like, I wanna have, um, some events where the champion of this game can face another school champion for this game too, so that way, that can bring two networks together at once, hence alumni associations become more joined together, that work with students' needs, and then two, give students more options available for college and high schools, but.
And they like competition.
They do.
You know?
I love it.
They like competition, because it gives you a goal, you know, I am trying to beat this other team or school or whatever, but there's nothing wrong with friendly competition, and we wanna do the things that spark um, individuals to want to do more, to, to gain that knowledge, and then ultimately collaboratively work together, cause you're also showing them how to work together, in teams and in groups, and, and as an individual, so.
Which can be used also for the workplace, how to be, how to be a good teammate.
Yeah.
How to be effective, and how to solve problems that can maybe arise out of nowhere, just know how to adapt that as well. Having that skill set fortified.
Yeah, you know what I'd love to see, I was thinking when you were saying that, is, I don't know if you've seen the commercial where they're eating the little gummy bears and they're sounding.
Ah, yes.
I would love to see a commercial like that, where everybody's playing, they're at the office, doing the games, you know? Having that, that, uh, social, emotional pause moment, and they're eating the gummy bears, and I'm probably, somebody's gonna see this, and then that idea is gonna come up, but that would be cool.
Not gonna do it first though.
Right, right, we, we should do that, we should do that, because so, go, go, and it could be someone's office or whatever, they're meeting, and here they are, you know, doing this gaming as an outlet in the middle, you know, of the day.
Mm-hmm, yeah, can remember that movie called The Wash, with, uh, Dr. Dre, Snoop Dogg, Ben Wallace?
Tell me what happened in it, what happened?
So Ben Wallace, he's the boss of the car wash.
Okay.
And his lunch break, he's playing a, um, video game on his computer, he's shooting people on a video game.
Oh, my god.
And then, then Dr. Dre knocks on the door, he's, he's like, oh, uh, come in, come in. He has a video game, and then when he leaves, and he plays a game.
He's going back in the game.
And then he came back, and he was like, boy, what do you want? But like, he's still playing the game while he's saying it.
Right, right, right.
So stuff like that, it's just those little things to catch.
It is, it is, and we need that, you know, how do you, how do you stop and take that calming moment?
Right.
You know, and that's the video.
Yeah, and but also there's like job training.
Yeah.
The military, of course, is always ahead of the holocaust, but, um, they use that too for VR simulations about how to fly, how to do a certain task or mission, or whatever else, but also s- some other jobs too, like how to make weapons, like a blacksmith, or, there's different ways to have simulations in VRs guys with your life, and it's very important to learn safety, hence why they made the simulations type of things, um, NASA, of course, we all know NASA, um, another company that does video games for VR for job training, so.
And you know, um, I'm gonna date myself on this one, I know I am, I, have you, have you ever heard of, or did you know of the simulators that we use to learn how to drive?
I think so, it's like.
It's so funny, one just came up on social media, and I clicked it, and I'll send it to you after, but we learned in a simulator, uh, it was, it was a simulated car that we were in, that was, well, it wasn't that many years ago, I was about to say years, you know, that, you know, not that old. But, um, you know, that's what we use, and it was actually in school. So now, you know, individuals have to sign up, what other, uh, training places before, or a lot of students are waiting till they're eighteen to avoid that, and then, you know, they can do it on their own, um, without, you know, behind the wheel, or with someone else teaching them. But, um, we had, um, I don't know who that is. But, um, the thing of it is, is that, that's what we used to, to train with, and that's how we learned exactly how to drive. Was on a simulated car, yeah, and, and we sat in there, and all the things was around us, and we were told to do particular uh, signals and whatnot, and then we had to get so many hours of that before we were able to then go take our driver's exam test, with simulators way back when.
See?
Yeah.
That's amazing, that's amazing. Yeah, so hopefully, maybe it can bring that back a little more toward curriculum, I, you know, I don't know the whole, the functions of that, but that'd be cool.
I think all of this, as we begin to talk more about all of this, some things that were done in the past, you know, some things, a lot of things were good, you know, some things were just before their time.
Yeah, that's true, like, I would love to have, like, all schools that have workshops and cooking classes, fun.
And I'm telling you, and that was again, you know, you know, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's another thing that I've really been pushing, we called it home air.
Yes.
Economics, right? Because then you learn those basic skills, again, cooking, and then there's the other side that I definitely am pushing for financial literacy, right? Because checkbooks, I mean, it was a way of at least tracking what you were doing.
Right.
Um, versus, I'm gonna just keep going until they tell me it's gone, and then I'm gonna pay fees on what I still got, because they let me get more, even though I didn't have it, and that's that budgeting, and th- those are life skills, right? It all fall into life skills, but cooking is important, you know, you don't have to eat out all the time. You can, but it costs, and when you start thinking about the cost and weighing all those things out, you're kinda like, okay, I could, uh, get a whole pack of hot dogs for what you take for two, you know?
Yeah, really though, and then it's also, it's fun, you know, to learn how to cook, certainly, cause I, you know, kinda, kinda like you said earlier about me doing so many things.
Yeah.
Me too, I love to cook.
Yeah.
I love to cook food, and it's just another passion of mine also, but it's like amazing.
It's creative, right? When you're doing it, it takes away, it's, you're creating your own creation, right? What you want, how you want it, either seasoned or not seasoned, so. Cooking, culinary arts is another thing that we have in some of our schools as well, and believe it or not, we do have a lot of students interested in that, cause it's, it's creative, and there's money in, you know, that, you go to New York, and you talk, you know, you are in some fancy restaurants, making some good money, being able to have that skill, cause it is a skill.
Yeah, man, I wish I had that class growing up in my schools.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that too, so, um, but also now to move on to the, to the other question too, um, do you have any last, not request, but last comments to, to us as a company, but also to the viewers as well about what you have going on, or just stuff in period about life?
Yeah, so, I mean, again, this is great, and like I said, we have to engage, and we have to continue to talk more um, within our communities, and learn about what everyone is doing, um, and not try to duplicate it, but to see how I can empower, how I can lift, how I can connect you to other things, and that's what I'm excited about doing more of, especially at Arrowhead United Way, we have done some amazing connective, um, relationships, including you and your organization, to support it in that way, to give you an opportunity to be out in the community. But then when I, you know, I shift other hats, and I start to think about, you know, what's happening in education and in government, you, we have to hear your voice, and what sometimes people forget is like, who to call, and how do I do all that? And that's great and wonderful, and in the case, you know, I make myself available in my role, but there are those meetings where those, me and the rest of the people like me are there to hear that information, and you just have to seize those moments as public individuals to come out, it's public meetings, for example, your city council, you wanna share some information, you go down and find out the days when those meetings are, and that moment is sketched out for you as a public to be able to speak on a subject. The school district is the same thing, you know, talking about what you wanna see in the school gives us those ideas, because we don't know everything, because we've been elected, and I'm very blessed and very thankful to be trusted with the role that I have, but we wanna hear more from you, so take those opportunities, because others are watching. When you come, it's videos, recorded, same thing with the county board, uh, supervisors, that's the other side of the resourcing and social services. Be out there, talking to those legislators, those are your local legislators, you have more access to us in those roles than you have, the further it goes beyond Sacramento to DC. We're lucky to also have, you know, local congressmen here, who's wanting to hear these things, and believe it or not, that's how they determine laws and policies and different things they're gonna do, it is you all that let us know what's happening in areas that we may not get to be in. We don't have the opportunity to always be where you are, but you can find your way to us when we are in the formal situation, if you don't know us individually, then come and share and tell, those are your moments. So don't miss those opportunities to find out, you know, when we're at events and things like that, it's harder, you know that. But I'm an exception to the rule, I try to get to everyone, but, um, that, those are not necessarily the times, it's good to be there to support, but come to our meetings and share with us, or call up, you know, as, I, I know, I know that happened with you, and sometimes, you know, sometimes people are not good at calling, and know this is very important, you can call for an individual meeting at any time in the roles of the legislators, you get with their field workers, you call into their office, you let them know, that's even a greater opportunity, where you can meet one-on-one, and then be able to make your appeal, but you can see all of them, whether seven or five serving, go to those meetings, cause that's where your voices are heard.
That was all very golden, so hopefully you guys can rewind that segment, or keep watching it again and again, taking notes while you're hearing and watching the video, that's important, you know, you know, and that's what we do also, we wanna not just be there for ourselves, but be there for the community.
Absolutely.
So that's why my name of my company is Gaming Community Establishment, cause it's gaming, you know, of course gaming, but community.
Absolutely.
How can we all get involved together to get to our common goal?
Absolutely.
You know, in establishment, learning how to actually have access to certain things that we want to. You know, in establishment, learning how to actually have access to certain things that we want to.
Absolutely, so I'm looking forward to, you know, engaging more, doing what I can. Definitely want to make sure you're connected to the things that they're moving forward within the local district here. When it comes to esports, I got it. But under that is coding and and gaming, so I get it. Get the lingo, there's so many acronyms sometimes, it's like, what does this mean? But one, once I get it, you know, I'm I'm better equipped to be able to be a voice to um, you know, champion. The cause and in doing anything good for our community, as as well as our people in the community and certainly our youth. I'm I'm all in, I'm all in.
That's awesome, Gwen, um, you're much appreciated for sure for the podcast show, um, so something that you said. You truly mean that, I can tell. You're genuine, cuz hence why you're here, like you have, you know, I'm pretty sure you had a little, little hurdles here and there. But you overcame.
Absolutely.
You know. You know, regardless of not for your support or not, but you still made it. Because you got persistence. Never gave up.
To be persistent.
Guys, you have to keep on going for what you wanna do with your life and it's fun. Don't worry about, oh, I'm afraid to get it, I mean, uh, afraid not to get it, I'm so stressed. That's part of the process. There's been a lot of time for myself where I've been stressed about life or. Or life for my business or life for my for my careers and just talking to certain people, but I overcame. Just be yourself, you know, and then the right people will just be be connected with you, that's all it is.
And stay in your lane, you know, you don't, we we we, when you have a big heart, you wanna do a lot. But you learn that you can do everything, you can connect and you can support the people to do the things that you also are passionate about. But stay in that lane of this is what I do, and everything that connects to doing that is where you should be. And become be a part of, you know, if you are looking to be in a restaurant business and do some things. Then why are you over here with the fishing and gaming or, you know, something like that? Stay around the things that tie in to what you wanna do, and guess what, you will start to see the people. That support in those areas, and then you fine tune what it is that you do, and just stay, stay on that mark. Because it's important for you to be consistent in what you do, if you say that's what you do. Then that's what people will be looking for you to do, is exactly what you said you do, not something else, or I could do this or could do. Do what you do and then expand on that and then you'll be able to add to it later, but if it's gaming. Or, you know, whatever, be that, because when we come to you, that's what we're asking, cuz it's something that we can't do.
Yeah, once again, great answer. Wonderful answer, wow, yeah, that's true, well, yes, we hope to s- still be involved, you know, with community, but also with you. With like what you have going on.
Next Saturday is the twenty fifth, and why do I know that? Because the wonderful ladies of Zeta Phi Beta is having our fighter woman here luncheon, so it's early part of the day. So and I actually am getting an award to my surprise, I was making sure others were being taken care of and then they surprised me, so. Okay, so that makes it even better, so that's more doable.
Right, right, you know, so like hopefully, you know, you know, we come see you there, but if not, totally get it, but from one PM to seven PM. Yeah, the whole day, so we have raffles, prizes for you guys, maybe some possible stuff for internships for you guys who attend. And we're gonna have um people from CSUSB be representatives to help give you guys more resources and how to actually be involved in college. Because like I said, video games, yes, but also make them educational.
That's what it's all about.
Yeah, so it's gonna be an amazing day, it's gonna be a lot of stuff going on that day, but it's gonna be amazing, and we just hope to see you guys there as well. Um, just come out there to express yourself, um, but pay attention to the flyer, this flyer is a little different from my last ones I've done before, this is. More, more area coverage. Because now this time, for the adults only, of course, we have a bar area for people who wanna just relax and mingle that way too. In case they just don't wanna see games all day, they can come back and forth, food there, of course, too, will be fo- will be provided. Um, there's some pretty good food there too.
Well, Arrowhead United Way also, that's a coverage area as well, so that's great, that's great to know. Supporting.
Yeah, definitely.
I know, gotta be there.
Gotta be there, guys, gotta be there, um, don't be afraid to go online and sign up, but if not. You can come in the door too as well to get your tickets to be entered in there, uh, for the tournament or just for a general admission. So either or, but that ticket does grant you access to a video game, just come through one of my gaming tables to sign up for that first. The game will start at three PM, so we have Dev Jam Fire from New York, all the rappers, about the old school time rappers. And then we have Smash Brothers Ultimate, so San Bernardino on the IE, very popping with that video game, so. Those two games will be there for the event, guys, so win some prizes, free merchandise, have fun and come out.
Nice. I'm so proud of you, I am, I'm proud of you pushing this vision, support him, definitely, the vision is just flourishing. So proud, so proud.
Well, well, guess what, much appreciated, much appreciated, cuz I'm proud of you too as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Do what you're doing.
We all need that encouragement, you know, we never get to the point where we don't need it, and this is what continues to spark my energy too as well. So I'm honored, I'm actually on the podcast.
Great to know, well, great to know, you know, we decided to have you, you know, we heard so much, but but also like me kind of too. I kinda knew you before also, but I never really like sat down with you to talk one-on-one, you know, I was like, oh, you know, I've seen her before a few times. I gotta talk to her and then boom. Two years later, so. Yeah, so, okay, well, well, thank you for being being today on the podcast show, it was very great to have you. We will definitely um spread this all around through our social medias and outlets and share to other people as well, that we know, so we can get the word out more about you. You know, what you do as well, cuz it's very important to highlight you also.
I'm 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 honored, I appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely, well, okay, well, thank you for your time today, it's been a blessing, um, guys, also share this video. Share this video also, not just for us, but for Ms. Rogers here, or sorry, Mrs. Rogers, correct? Yes, Mrs. Rogers, but just for your own well-being, so you guys can know and stay aware of what's going on. For your communities and what we have to offer for you guys, um, if you wanna reach out to Everhead United Way, please do so. Wonderful staff, wonderful people here, a- and they really are here for you and the community. So in the meantime, guys, stay safe out there and catch you next time.